Excuse me. We begin with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll rise, please. You'll join me in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll start out with public comment. And this evening, we have one person who has requested to comment. Is anyone online seeking recognition to be able to comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. And if you would come forward, give your name and address for the clerk's record. Clifford Meath.
Can you try to tell them they'll be abbreviated?
Thank you. Thank you.
Need an extra column?
It's your big question. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Clifford Meath. Public speaking is La Mike Forte. Stay with me. I'd like to thank my city council for the work they do. I'm here to talk to you about infrastructure, transportation, and passenger rail service to western North Carolina, and how it can affect us here tonight. I have a little one-page presentation. I'll try to be brief. I come before my city council and ask for help in saving a western North Carolina landmark. I am referring to Salute the Grave, Route, Railroad Tracks. Our local conservation group is about to obtain ownership of it and make it a hiking trail. I am here tonight to save Salute the Grave Railroad line and how the conservation group have their hiking trail also truly a win-win situation. Please allow me to explain. The conservation group in Hendersonville has already been to Raleigh and their local North Carolina state officials. They will obtain the capital needed by having the general assembly allocate the money for the purchase of this rail line. The state of North Carolina will be giving these monies to the Department of Natural Resources, who in turn will, who in turn, who will turn these monies over to the Pope County Community Foundation, who will let out contracts to develop this rail-to-trail project. They will take up the rails and ties and sell them off to raise monies. They will then grade the right-of-way for their new Salute the Grave trail. There is a federal program called Rails, Rails with Trails, where conservation groups can develop a trail using the unused portion of a railroad right-of-way and still have railroad tracks in place for future use, if not currently being used. Why is this important? Rails in Hendersonville are part of a railroad route from Spartanburg, South Carolina, and goes some sixty miles to Asheville, North Carolina. Currently, Spartanburg, South Carolina, has Amtrak Rail Passenger Service and Asheville, North Carolina recently received federal infrastructure funds for studies to answer questions pertaining to future NC DOT/Amtrak Rail Passenger Service. This route to Asheville, North Carolina, will be on the Norfolk Southern S-line traveling from Salisbury, North Carolina, some one hundred and thirty miles to Asheville, North Carolina. On our line here, the process going forward is to let NC DOT know of these plans of rails and trails and to have them purchase the rail line instead of the Department of Natural Resources. If NC DOT were to own the line, then the rails would remain in place for future Amtrak Rail Passenger Service. Future Rail Passenger Service will be much different than current Passenger Train Service. The states of Georgia and North Carolina have been developing a high-speed rail passenger service between the cities of Atlanta, Georgia, and Charlotte, North Carolina since nineteen ninety-two. And the recent bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed Congress gave this route a much-needed infusion of monies to drive this project forward. This route has already been defined as the chosen high-speed route of the six routes identified and will be traversing through the upstate of South Carolina. The one and only rail passenger stop in the upstate will be at Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport in Greer, South Carolina. These rails, these rails in Hendersonville, North Carolina currently are able to go to Greer, South Carolina, once it gets to the bottom of the mountain. These rails need to stay in place for the time being until Amtrak gets into the new Greer, Greer, South Carolina, multi-motor transportation center, at which time this route up to Asheville would easily qualify for future Amtrak passenger rail expansion. I have included a list of North Carolina state officials who need to be notified of me to get this project rolling on the rails. And before you, you have the same information. Thank you. If I could, I'd like to make a little comment about local politics as of course in doing this little project. I was led by my, I'll get the terms right. What's the regional and metro? Regional and metro, RPO and MPO, excuse me. I'm sure we all know about MPOs and RPOs. I wrote to my Asheville RPO and they refused or did not want to call or write back. I for one have questions about what is their duty if not to respond to those interested in helping. My local situation is such that I brought a consultant up here from Charlotte to meet with Mr. Conant, at which time we, I invite my MPO/RPO representative to meet us at lunch prior to meeting Mr. Conant and she opted to spend time with the family at a ski vacation on a Monday. How am I supposed to understand the process if those who are local in nature aren't responding? With that said, one less item are Hendersonville depots. And so made a hundred and fifty years in four years. I am willing to donate time and effort to make some kind of celebration possible if I can get a little help. I'd like to have the North Carolina Department, DOT, has an engine called the City of Asheville that I'm aware that I would like to bring down here for July 4th, especially before two thousand twenty-nine, if at all possible. July 4th is our anniversary of Rail Passenger Service here in Hendersonville. So I'm not allowed to take questions, is what I've been told, so I hope this satisfies. Mr. Conant has my email.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Conant has my email and Clark has my email. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meath. Next, we have consideration of the agenda. Anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda this evening? Is a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Nice to have it. Motion carries. We have our agenda. Consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Not a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I read that City Council approved the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discretion? Not those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Nice to have it. We have our consent. Those items have been approved. Right. We have a number of presentations this evening. Starting with MVPs.
Mayor of all members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to recognize this quarter's MVPs. For the audience, MVPs are our members of our team who have gone above and beyond law of duty. Recognize them quarterly, and then there's an MVP of the year that we recognize around the first of every year. So I'd like to start with our water and sewer utility. I see our utility director there and I'd like to ask Richard Burshell and Chad Kidman.
Chad, unfortunately, I think is not here.
Okay. So Richard and Chad, Adam is there. Matt Kirahan, our town of Mills River, called to tell the city of how Chad and Richard went out of their way on providing great customer service to the town of Mills River to assist in identifying a private side of water issue quickly and professionally resulting in a minimal disruption to the town's water service. If I remember correctly, it's right around Helene or sometime, or is this? Water broke and had a private line and it was in the winter, right? Oh, it was in the winter?
They had a private? Yeah, it was cold snap. It was within the last two or three months, I think. Yeah, they had a private site there and we had to help them track down the leak on their end of it.
Okay, great. So prevented further damage and additional costs to the town of Mills River. So I would like to thank Richard and Chad for going above and beyond the call of duty.
Not middle. And congratulations. And I'll let you take that with your chat. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. If Tom will join us and I'll invite Travis, Alejandro, Ricky, Eric, Randy, and Kevin to join us. Those of you.
Couple of them here.
The rest of them are out. So when the fire department caused some damage, where's the fire department? When the fire department caused some damage by sliding off the road during Hurricane Helene, all right, we'll give them credit.
Here comes the fire chief.
Way to go.
You're getting the blame. I wanted you in the room. When the fire department caused some damage by sliding off the road during Hurricane Helene, I advised the landowner to let us know when he was ready and we would repair the damage which we had caused. One team, right? The landowner waited several months before contacting us till a while time for us to calm down from the storm. I requested Kevin Rose help in determining what we needed to do to repair the damaged area and said that he and his crew would repair the area for us since they had the knowledge and equipment to do the job correctly. And because we are supposedly to help each other within the city of Hendersonville family. On March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Kevin and his crew made the repairs, which looked professionally done. The fire department is grateful for the help and proud to be on the same team. So this was nominated by the fire department and like to recognize our Parks Division for, and Grounds Division for a job well done, going above and beyond and bailing your fire department out of. Mayor, you'll present. Kevin and Eric are here, so.
All right.
And give the rest to Tom.
Give the rest to Tom. Yeah. Eric. All right. And get it here. All right. Congratulations.
We say firefighters, cheese.
Thank you. And Tom, if you'll stay up here, you have some more team members who went above and beyond. And Ms. Justice, can you come out from behind that? Or I'll get Brian. Brian, won't you, if you'll stand up there, because I want to ask Ricky and Dorian, Travis, Jerry, and Brandy. So. So yeah, so we got, we got Brandy. So working along Queer Creek, Ricky, Dorian, and Travis, the property maintenance, found a muddy wedding pillow along the creek bed with a last name and wedding date. Recognize its, recognizing its sentimental value. It could be a remnant from Helene. They cleaned it up, hoping to find its owner. Jerry Billers, in building maintenance, reached out to Brandy to see if the pillow could be reunited using the city's social media. Within a few minutes, Brandy located the owners, Lindsay and Jack Gogar. Gogar?
Gogar.
Gogar, all right. Received this pillow as a gift from Lindsay's grandmother in two thousand twenty-one. The couple lived in Hendersonville but lost their home from Hurricane Helene. Lindsay's grandmother had passed, but knowing that someone found and was turning the pillow made the couple emotional and grateful. The pillow has been shipped to the couple's new home in South Carolina. So I'd like to thank Brandy and the rest of our team who really went above and beyond to give the pillow back to the rightful owners and say thank you and congratulations on a job well done.
I should have just stayed up there. That's okay. Next, we have a proclamation for Jewish Heritage Month. The woman who was supposed to receive this is stuck in Charlotte. So is there anyone else from Nahama or the Buddhist Israel who would be able to receive it? Okay, if not, I will go ahead and read it anyway. Whereas Jewish Americans have made significant and lasting contributions to the cultural, civic, and economic fabric of the United States, including the city of Hendersonville. And whereas Jewish Heritage Month provides an opportunity to celebrate and honor the history, traditions, and achievements of the Jewish community while promoting awareness, education, and unity among all residents. And whereas Nahama Jewish Response to Disaster, a national nonprofit with an active presence in western North Carolina, including Hendersonville, has exemplified the values of compassion, service, and community support by deploying five hundred volunteers who have contributed more than sixty-five hundred hours to forty disaster relief projects since October, two thousand twenty-four. And whereas Nahama not only brings critical aid in times of crisis, it also serves as a bridge to greater interfaith understanding, often representing the only Jewish organization that some clients will encounter, fostering dialogue and trust through direct service. And whereas recent Nahama-led events such as Good Deeds Day and Yom Hashoah Holocaust Remembrance Day have united diverse communities across faiths to honor Holocaust survivors, combat anti-Semitism, and strengthen bonds through shared learning and service. And whereas the city of Hendersonville is committed to recognizing and uplifting all communities that contribute to our vibrant, inclusive, and resilient city. Now therefore, I barber all mayor of the city of Hendersonville to hereby proclaim May, two thousand twenty-five, as Jewish Heritage Month in Hendersonville, North Carolina, and encourage all residents to reflect on the enduring contributions of Jewish Americans. Let us honor these contributions by embracing the values of tolerance, equity, and service. In recognition of organizations like Nahama Jewish Response to Disaster, whose presence in our region exemplifies these values through hands-on relief and interfaith unity, I further invite residents to consider joining in their efforts to support and often uplift communities in times of need. Okay. And she will pick this up when she gets back in town tomorrow. All right. The next one is a presentation to us on the Human Trafficking Task Force. Come forward and.
Hello there. Go ahead and have everyone introduce themselves very quick.
I'm Mindy Denny and I'm with Henderson County Department of Social Services.
I'm Christina Holt-Greven. I'm with TruRidge. I'm the immigration attorney there.
And I'm Michael Sutton. I'm actually a school social worker with Henderson County Public Schools. Prior to being in Henderson County, I was actually a former police officer in the Charlotte area as well as a school social worker. So on top of that, I was a member of the Human Trafficking Task Force in Charlotte. And this has a special place in all of our hearts for very obvious reasons. So if you'll direct your attention to the PowerPoint, we're going to do the Cliff Notes version of this here this evening, just based on time constraints. So why are we talking about this? Human Trafficking Response Team here in Henderson County, it started in July of two thousand twenty-three. We're here to talk about this because geographically speaking, we're in a perfect place for human trafficking. And so just for statistical purposes, we sit between several major cities. We're not too far from Nashville. We're not too far from Asheville. We're very close to Atlanta. We're very close to Charlotte. Those are all hotbeds for human trafficking. Human trafficking doesn't tend to stay in one particular place. It tends to move. And for those of you that may have, you know, seen the movie Taken, for instance, a lot of people kind of have in their mind, this is what human trafficking looks like. It's someone snatched off the street that is either sex trafficked or is labor trafficked. So like I said, we're going to try to do the Cliff Notes version. We would love to talk more about this at a later date, but just, you know, we want to make sure that we're, you know, providing some education and awareness to this kind of thing because, you know, unfortunately, this is happening in communities every place. And, you know, they say that knowledge is power. This is, this is the reason that we're here. So we are very fortunate to have a large partnership from a lot of, a lot of different organizations to include Department of Social Services, education, law enforcement, our DA's office, different support organizations, mental health, like that. So, you know, everyone is taking time out of their schedule to come together to, to address this issue because we're all seeing it in various forms. So again, very quickly, we're going to go through just a very basic agenda. We're going to talk about the problem, the process, the people, and the next steps. So I apologize if I'm, if I'm speed-talking. So what is, what is the problem? Well, first of all, let's start with the definition. What is human trafficking? It's a crime involving the exploitation of a person for labor, services, or commercial sex. Now, one of, as you'll see later in the presentation, one of the primary pieces of this is coercion. As in, you know, taking a person's situation that, you know, may have different needs that are being unmet. Person steps into a position, maybe a position of power, we'll say, you know, in the, from the aspect of labor trafficking, you know, an employer that steps up and says, you know what, we can, we can take care of, we can take care of your employment situation, but, you know, there are some things that we're going to need you to do. And again, we'll kind of get into the weeds in this probably at a later date. We're going to glaze over it here today. So as far as the two types of trafficking, the two major types are going to be sex trafficking as well as labor trafficking. As far as sex trafficking goes, that's the recruiting, harboring transportation and provision, excuse me, provision, obtaining patronage, or soliciting a person for the purpose of commercial sex acts. Now, again, you know, coercion, force, or fraud are always going to be the keys, whether we're talking about sex trafficking, whether we're talking about labor trafficking. We're, you know, a huge portion of our community is, is focused on, you know, agriculture and so forth, which makes us, you know, a potential hotbed for, you know, folks that have ill intent. As far as sex trafficking goes, again, sex trafficking tends to move along interstates, along major routes. And again, you know, we have this idea from watching movies and seeing television shows and Dateline and so on and so forth. We think of folks that are, you know, snatched off the street, you know, kids that are maybe runaways that get taken. They're never seen again. Most often, you know, the folks that are sex trafficked are actually, if they're minors, they're going back to their parents. You know, it may be, may not be the best of households in terms of support, but they're going back to parents every night, which was something that, that in Charlotte, we, it was an eye-opening experience for us because on our task force, you know, on top of having all the partners that we just talked about, we had state, federal, and local law enforcement. So we had folks from the FBI as well as Department of Homeland Security. And, you know, I was in a very well, we were at the beginning, right before the meeting started, Angela and I were speaking about this and, you know, I happened to be in a, in a very affluent high school. While I was there for seven years, we had three confirmed accounts, which was eye-opening because again, these were not folks that, these were not children that you would look at and think, oh, okay, well, this is a perfect candidate for someone who is being sex trafficked. So how big is the problem? Well, these are old statistics. So again, we're talking about two thousand and one. We need to update these. These are, these are just the reported instances of trafficking that went to the trafficking hotline. So in other words, you know, for every one case that, that is reported, you know, we theoretically, we could look at one to two cases that are not reported. And in terms of, in terms of victims, most victims don't actually identify themselves as victims. Those victims usually take about twelve months to finally look at, once there's been intervention, to look at a situation and say, you know what, I actually was a victim because it doesn't typically start off as, again, someone who was snatched off the street and, you know, all of a sudden the red flags go off. This isn't right. As far as the process goes, recruiting for sex trafficking, I want you to pay special attention to this slide. This should be very, very telling. You know, so we're looking at family members that are trafficking members of their family, an intimate partner, intimate partner, a friend, acquaintance, or a coworker. All right. Again, these are people that know their victim. Okay. They take time to, they take time to figure out, you know, who is the perfect victim? Would this person fall into that category? If so, maybe we'll try this. As far as labor trafficking goes, like I said earlier, you know, we look at employers, friends, or coworkers. I talked about a situation at, beginning of high school that I was at in Charlotte and we later found out that there was, there was another student that was working with. we later found out that there was another student that was working with several adults whose job it was to recruit people for this very thing at school. And again, this is a very affluent school. So, you know, again, we have this idea that, you know, there's a socioeconomic bound to this, there is nothing. So what's technology's role? Technology is a double-edged sword. We live and die by it, it seems, you know, everyone's got their computers, their tablets, their laptops. You know, if you talk to anyone that works with kids, works in DSS, works in schools, you know, it's a wonderful tool, but it also can be something that is used by folks to draw kids into all kinds of things, to include this. And again, technology is one of the best ways in the world for someone to recruit someone for either sex trafficking or labor trafficking, because it's like casting a very, very wide net. The next slide, so, you know, when we talk about the manipulation, when trafficking begins, it doesn't, in a lot of ways, it's probably like an abusive relationship, it doesn't start off that way. First of all, you know, obviously, the victim has to be sought out. That person that seeks them out is going to build some trust, is going to meet some basic needs that aren't being met. Then they move on to isolating and exploiting them. Once that happens, we have to maintain control, all right? And again, this is why it's so hard for a lot of victims of human trafficking, whether it be sex trafficking or labor trafficking, to actually understand, you know, I got played. You know, it takes, again, an average of about 12 months. In terms of vulnerabilities, you know, what are some of the factors that come into play when that person is looking for a victim? Well, as you can see from the slide, you know, we cover everything from family disruption to poverty, mental health, substance abuse is a huge one, homelessness, LGBTQ+, history of sexual abuse. That is, those are just some of the main areas that someone looks to exploit. You know, the folks that are doing this, they know what they're doing, they know who they're looking for. Think of a basketball or a football recruiter, they know what skills they're looking for in the players, just like someone who is looking to exploit someone for sex or labor trafficking, they know what they're looking for. They're looking for certain vulnerabilities, they're very polished at it. In terms of the disguises they use, those are pretty much self-explanatory, you know, but I'll go ahead and let you take a quick look at the slide. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to skip the examples, just in the interest of time, for a typical situation that involves sex trafficking, labor trafficking, but again, we can really kind of get into the weeds in the interest of time. We could probably talk for hours about this, but again, we have a very full agenda. As far as the people goes, how does society think of victims? Well, we all, again, have this idea in our head that, like I said before, that someone is snatched off the street, or someone is brought into this unwillingly. Most of the time, that's not the case. Does it happen like that? Certainly. But most of the time, people are manipulated into this, and, you know, it's like the adage of boiling a frog. The frog doesn't realize that it's in trouble until a lot of times it's too late. This is a very, very similar situation. These are the kind of folks that we're talking about that are trafficked, whether it be sex traffic, whether it be labor traffic. Now, as far as minors go, we talked about a little bit earlier, we talked about coercion. When it comes to a minor being sex trafficked, there is no such thing as child prostitution. So in other words, there is no way that that can happen. If a child can't, under the age of 18, they cannot, they cannot...
Consent.
Consent, thank you, to sex, okay? Which means through coercion, that is, if there's coercion that's involved, that would meet the definition of sex trafficking. So again, why are we talking about this? It's really to kind of, to start to raise awareness. Unfortunately, there's not a sheet of paper that we can give anyone where you can simply check some boxes and say, that's it, that person is absolutely a victim of trafficking. It really takes a lot of folks that work in the industries that we work in, that work day-to-day with kids, and with adults for that matter, to kind of hear their stories and to start to parse out some of the things that we're hearing that potentially could meet that definition. DSS sees it, law enforcement sees it, we all see it. And unfortunately, a lot of times, this is the type of thing that happens under our nose. We were talking a little bit earlier, to put this in medical terms, if someone's in medical school and they happen to be absent the day they taught oncology, and you're a generalist practitioner, if you don't know to look at symptoms through that particular lens, it's going to fly, it's going to go right over your head. Again, you know, statistically speaking, we're in the perfect place for this because whenever there's, in terms of sex trafficking, whenever there's a major event that takes place, we'll say there's a NASCAR race in Charlotte, we'll say that there's a concert that takes place in Nashville, there's a show that's taking place in Asheville. Most of the time, a lot of those victims are being moved around from place to place. They're gone for the weekend. In terms of kids being school age, you know, we look for things like truancy, we look for dropping grades, we look for a lot of different things. But the point is, you know, it's very likely from a statistical standpoint, it's taking place here. We know in the last two weeks that we have seen news coverage where folks have either been prosecuted or charged in Asheville as well as Greenville. Guess where we sit? We sit in the thoroughfare right between them, right up Highway 25. So again, how do we identify? We wish there was a checklist. What we want to do is we want to make sure, again, we raise some community awareness to start to think about this as something that potentially could be taking place here. Again, we don't say this to scare anyone, again, knowledge is power. If we know what we potentially could be looking at, that's a way to kind of stop it. If we don't realize that it's taking place, again, this could be taking place in our neighborhood, it could be taking place at our next-door neighbors, and if we don't think about it, if we don't at least, you know, raise an eyebrow when things don't seem right, then again, it's going to continue. So as far as next steps go, again, we're here to make sure that we try to provide some education to folks. We are willing to talk to anyone and everyone that is willing to listen, church groups, if you are involved in any other civic groups, again, please invite us, we would love to talk to you about it, and just, you know, share what we can in terms of raising awareness. What else can we do? Well, we need to make sure that we're reporting. Who do we report it to? Well, right up there, the Henderson County Department of Social Services, the Sheriff's Department, and all of our law enforcement agencies. If there's something that doesn't seem quite right, and you have a child, say, that is in school, it's okay to go ahead and call school, to speak to a school social worker, a counselor, resource officer, to say, listen, we've got some concerns, I don't know what this is, I have no, this might be nothing, but it's better to go ahead and to look into it and, you know, be able to say, okay, well, maybe there's something else going on, as opposed to ignoring it and having this very thing take place, okay? Because the victims spend, whether you're talking about labor trafficking or sex trafficking, they spend an entire lifetime trying to recover from this, and a lot of times they don't. So are there any, I know that was very quick, are there any questions?
Just to not leave this loose end while y'all are here, will you touch on what, like, what you recommend the call being if somebody suspects something? Do you recommend DSS? Do you recommend the school? Do you recommend police?
Well, it really is going to depend on who that is. So in other words...
What demographic they fit in and where they...
Where they feel safe, yeah. So, you know, if it happens to be maybe an immigrant or a Spanish-speaking person, they're welcome to come to True Ridge. It could be a person that maybe could refer to Safelight, Safelight is a safe place. Law enforcement is the first choice, but if a lot of people maybe don't feel comfortable calling the police, they could start with one of the other nonprofits, and then we can help them and go with them to report it to the police. And I just want to say, at True Ridge, we have had a couple calls with some trafficking here in our county, so it is here, and we just need to acknowledge that it is here, and the more that the public knows about it, then we can stand up to these folks that are doing the human trafficking and say, we're not going to have this in our community.
And as wonderful a community as we are, we always have some unscrupulous folks that look for an angle. We're no different. And, you know, as far as, you know, getting back to your original question, you know, if it's a minor, someone under the age of 18, DSS, the school, because again, we're actually going to be doing this presentation with folks from Student Services, excuse me, Student Services here very, pardon me, Student Services here very soon, either at the end of the school year or the beginning of next. So again, this is something that's going to be in the forefront. All of us, all of the agencies that we have listed, we all do training on this. So the school system, law enforcement does, DSS, we all do. So again, if, you know, if we're talking about a minor, school, law enforcement, DSS. If we're talking about, you know, an adult, then certainly law enforcement. If we're talking about something related to labor trafficking, again, True Ridge would be a fantastic resource. So again, thank you very much for your time, and look forward to speaking with whoever will listen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristin. But these items... All right, and now we're going to have another presentation. Joseph, you going to be doing this for Hands On? Pete?
Well, good evening, honorable members of the Hendersonville City Council. My name is Joseph Knight, I'm the director and CEO of the Hands On Children's Museum. And this evening, I stand before you to express our sincere thanks and support from the council to Hands On Children's Museum and the People's Museum and Walk of Fame Project. As you know, People's Museum Walk of Fame has a great cultural and historical significance to our community as we strive to continue to make the city of Hendersonville an even better place to live, work, and play. As you may recall, in 2021, the Hendersonville City Council made a significant commitment to celebrate the history and culture of all Hendersonville citizens by unanimously agreeing to provide a five-year financial investment to Hands On to develop, maintain, and operate the People's Museum and Walk of Fame within Hands On Children's Museum. Thanks to the generous support from the city, Hands On opened the doors to the People's Museum Walk of Fame in 2022, and this unique educational and cultural resource has served thousands of children and adults throughout Henderson County and beyond. In fact, during the 2024 to 2025 fiscal year, we've served about 60,000 people total through the People's Museum and Hands On Children's Museum, and about 42% of those visitors were Hendersonville and Henderson County residents. During this past year, we facilitated a variety of free learning experiences that celebrates the culture, heritage, and history of the people of Henderson County. Thanks to support from the city, the museum was able to offer a variety of free programmatic experiences to enhance the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. Some of these activities that we facilitated within the past year include nationally-recognized holidays and nationally-recognized periods of observations, such as Black History Month, Juneteenth, Indigenous Peoples' Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Kwanzaa, and more. We also installed a new exhibit within the People's Museum Walk of Fame that celebrates the history of the Underground Railroad. We have a local citizen who had made a permanent loan to our museum of a Underground Railroad quilt that's proudly on display, really unique piece. In October of last year, we never imagined that the People's Museum Walk of Fame would serve as a community hub during a time of crisis for the citizens of our great city. Our building was one of the few that had electricity, at the time, some running water, within the immediate aftermath of Hurricane Helene. We opened our doors of discovery to everyone in our community for free for the Children's Museum and the People's Museum on day three of the crisis. We welcomed thousands of citizens, these were citizens from all walks of life, there were children, there are families, and to our surprise, many senior citizens who sought out the museum as a resource. As a matter of fact, within just the first 48 hours of the crisis, we served over 1,000 people actually come through the doors. It was an unusual and unprecedented time, and we were amazed to see so many people seek out Hands On and the People's Museum as a safe and steadfast resource for food, supplies, acute medical care, Starlink internet access, hot meal service, and more. We were one-stop shop for a while, for a few weeks there. Hands On Children's Museum takes pride in meeting the needs of children and families throughout the community, and we are very thankful that the People's Museum Walk of Fame was a resource we can utilize to meet those needs during that time. When you go into the People's Museum Walk of Fame, one of the first things that you'll see is a 10-foot-tall painting of Henderson County being uplifted by multiple hands. The county is lifted towards the horizon of the Blue Ridge Mountains, and this painting was envisioned by the late Crystal Colley and painted by Hendersonville native Diamond Cash. And the key message of the painting is that it takes people of all lived experiences working together to achieve and maintain prosperity for our community. During the immediate aftermath of Helene, it was touching to see the People's Museum become a place, not only the celebration of history and culture, but a timely resource for the people of Henderson County and Hendersonville from all walks of life during a time that was needed more than ever. Looking back to last year, I can still have confidence that had it not been for our public-private partnership with the city of Hendersonville, we would not have been able to meet the needs of thousands of residents during such a critical time. As we enter the fifth year of our current grant funding agreement, I respectfully request the Hendersonville City Council to consider approving annual funding totaling $42,000 as indicated in our funding agreement to sustain the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. In addition to supporting operating costs, which are our monthly lease payments for the space, for the People's Museum, city funding is also used to help us leverage other funding sources to support the mission of the museum. City funding also allows Hands On to promote confidence and credibility with other public and private funding sources, resulting in improved fiscal sustainability. The public-private partnership between Hands On and the city has and continues to be a key to our success. On behalf of the children that we serve, I thank you for your continued support and partnership with Hands On Children's Museum. We're very excited about what the future holds as the museum approaches 20th anniversary in a couple of years. We have exciting plans to grow in the size and the audience in new and exciting and innovative ways. Understand that the council has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that a budget is passed for the city that meets the needs of all citizens. And I would just like to thank the council for their past investment and their consideration of year five of support for the People's Museum and Walk of Fame, a special resource that continues to make our great city a wonderful place to live, work, and play. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the People's Museum or Hands On Children's Museum in general.
Any questions? We're all pretty familiar with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. I'd like to raise a motion.
I'm the mayor, I'm going to let the city council approve the final commitment to Hands On Children's Museum and site center.
Thank you. Is there any discretion? Not? Those in favor of approving the final commitment to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let's have it, okay? That one's taken care of for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, another presentation. Jamie Carpenter. I represent the North Carolina Main Street Champion Program.
So every year, we have the privilege of nominating a Main Street champion as a part of being a North Carolina Main Street community. And Hendersonville's been a North Carolina Main Street community since 1986, and we get that privilege to nominate. And the state of North Carolina has done the Main Street Champion Program since 2000, nominating 962 community members from across the state of North Carolina. And we're very privileged to be able to nominate Caroline as our Main Street Champion for this year, Caroline Gunther. And I just wanted to read what we had read at the Main Street Conference, this was with the whole state of all of our Main Street Champions... This was with the whole state of all of our Main Street Champions, forty-seven others representing the state and awarded from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. So I'm just going to read the script here.
It's, she's, she's high with it. I was surprised when I heard it at the conference.
And I'm sorry, just to preface that the Main Street Champion is just a, a supporter of all of the volunteers and the community members who've supported the Main Street and downtown revitalization efforts. So for two decades, Caroline has been a steadfast leader and advocate for downtown Hendersonville. As a member and chair of the Downtown Advisory Board, Caroline has championed transformative projects, including our securing of eight-point-five million-dollar investment in parking infrastructure, establishing the Hendersonville Farmers Market, spearheading a four-million-dollar-plus, I have the wrong number, Seventh Avenue Streetscape Project, and driving multiple policy updates to improve downtown operations and vitality.
It was probably three-point-five when he wrote that.
Yeah, I think it probably was. Caroline's fearless approach to advocacy is one of her defining traits. She speaks candidly on key issues, listens thoughtfully to others, and consistently pushes for strategic, long-term improvements that benefit the entire community. As the owner of WAG, a unique pet boutique, Caroline has set a high standard for Main Street businesses. Known for offering quality products, delivering exceptional customer service, and demonstrating an entrepreneurial spirit, she has successfully navigated the challenges of a changing retail environment. As she approaches fifteen years as a Main Street business owner this year, Caroline's deep commitment to downtown Hendersonville remains evident in everything that she does. And just from a personal side, Caroline's been here since I've been here and been on the Downtown Board and has been a great person to call and offer a lot of support through a lot of different things that we've had going on in the last five years since I've been here downtown. And I don't think we'd get a, a better champion to nominate. And so I know she's been, I want to say something, but I would just like to present our award for Caroline. This is for the award of the champion. You can, if you want to speak and then we.
Yeah, I'll hang this one up. I, I wonder how many of the MVP awards Tom Wooten has. He's going to retire with a stack of them, but he deserves every single one. Madam Mayor, members of council, is it legendary? Is that legendary, Mayor Vol? Is that what I heard one time on the?
Yeah, legendary.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it was legendary, but. Thank you all for allowing me to do this for as long as you have. It has been a pleasure, it has been challenging. It has been a huge part of my personal identity to, to do this. I loved hearing all of the MVP awards because we get to hear the stories of people. And people make stories and stories make places. And this place is such a wonderful place, the city of Hendersonville. In the economic development realm, we talk about, and with downtown, we talk about place attachment and the definition is the emotional bond and sense of belonging that individuals feel towards a particular location. And I definitely have place attachment. If you've never experienced, so I think a lot of people, I've talked to people who are like, oh yeah, you know, I love where I live. And I'm like, no, it is not like that. It is like, like you cry over it, like it is like deep seated in your, in your gut and in your heart. And the joy and the gift of experiencing that in your lifetime is something that I wish everyone could have, and I am very, very glad to have it. And the reason that I get to have it is because of the people here in this community that make this place so wonderful. Jamie, love Jamie, such a good place, person. Everybody who works for the city, I'm so proud of you guys all the time. I mean, I watch like city council meetings on YouTube from places I lived or my cousins on council in Michigan. And let me tell you what, people think that we're not doing a good job. They don't know what they're talking about because this is just run so smoothly. And I am so proud all the time of all of our staff here and the people who participate. And, and thanks Lou. Lou was like, I hope you say some good stuff about me. We were joking. You are on the list, and I could go on for a long time. So let's see, I did want to say a couple of fun stories. I'm going to, I'm going to be quick, I'm going to try not to be long-winded because of all of the people and the stories that they've made. And these are, these are pretty funny. Jamie, do you remember when my mother sent an angry email to the city about something downtown? And I was the one that had to respond to it in a professional manner because my mother forgot that I was the chair of the Downtown Advisory Board, and I didn't call her. And I just responded to the email very formally. She copied like Lou and Matt Manley, and Matt Manley was brand new. And he was like, what is happening? Does Caroline know this person? It's her, it's her mother, yes, she does. That was funny. Terry, who's not here tonight, maybe in overflow, I don't know. But when Terry moved here, I was with Terry when she saw her first snow. She's from Florida, and I have a video of her dancing around in her first snow. Brian is not here, not in this room, yes, he is. Brian, do you remember when I met you? First day I met you? It was at Rhythm and Bruce. I was mean. Do you remember when I first met Brian?
I probably handled it.
Oh, man. It's, we'll have to talk about that later. Let's see, Brandon Monday, I know he's not here, maybe in overflow, but Brandon, before I owned WAG, Brandon worked for HPD, and I had someone creepily stalking me. And one night I thought they were in my house, and I drove to the police department here. And Brandon was in the parking lot on duty, and I told him what was going on. And he came to my house on Fourth Avenue and went like in first, like helped me. I mean, this was twenty-one years ago probably, so I always had a, a big affinity for him. And everybody else, uh, let's see, every time I hear Mike Toughman's name, the stormwater thing, I'm so proud of. Oh, my gosh, I like to brag about that when I travel. I'm like, let me tell you about our stormwater thing in my city. Jen, I first met you at Rhythm and Bruce, and Steve Wyatt, county manager, introduced us. Mayor Vol, do you remember, I don't know if you'll remember this, a long time ago when I came to ask for lights for the big trees in front of the courthouse? And I don't remember if it was you, it was a different makeup of council, but I know you were here. They suggested a cheaper option of a synthetic tree in the middle of the, a small one, like an eight-foot tree or something. And I said, that is tacky, we cannot have that. So we ended up getting like the twenty thousand dollars of lights years ago. And the first year, I kept them in my garage because once we took them down, we didn't know where they were supposed to be kept, so they went in my garage for the first year. Melinda, do you remember doing the captains interviews together? That was fun. And I love that HPD does those experiences for us, and it really fosters community involvement. And Lindsay, our recent basketball game, and why is there a Christmas tree? I, I should have brought a Christmas tree, but another time.
It looked like a Christmas tree.
It did look like a Christmas tree. It's a joke. And then Gina got married on Main Street in the middle of a pandemic, and I did the wedding. Yeah, Jen was there, and Mayor Volk was there. And I took Mayor Volk up to see the bride beforehand, and so we're all like thick in this, okay? So like, this is what makes it. Oh, and, and Chief, I remember the first time I saw you on camera doing part of your interview, and you said something like, your last name, my hand, like my hand and your hand working together. Sign me up. Yep, it's all over from here. So anyway, I just wanted to go through some of those fun things. And Angie and I got to catch up recently too, and we know so many of the same people. We didn't even realize how many connections we have, but that's what makes us. And Allison, Brandy, thanks to you guys, and whoever else I missed, everybody's wonderful. John Connett told me one time to be a citizen and not a customer, and I take that to heart and I think about it all the time. So be a contributor, and I am really happy to be able to contribute here to this wonderful community. And the last thing I want to say is that if anybody is coming to volunteer for the city, to be on one of the boards, I think the most important thing is to come to it from a place of love and dedication to wanting to make where you live and where you love better. And don't come to it from a place of disappointment or anger, come to the table ready to be generous. And if you do that, then you'll do great, and we welcome you here. So thank you all very much for letting me speak. Thank you for letting me do this. Thank you for trusting me, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can we actually get?
Get everybody in?
Yeah. Can we? I mean, this is my like one shot at pictures of the city council. Aren't you glad I don't come every public comment? On and on and on, commandeering everyone's public comment time?
It felt a little bit like you were roasting us.
I wasn't roasted, maybe it was just you.
It looked like a Christmas shirt next to the promise.
No, I, I, I look so short anyway. At least he, but if he does, he does. Take a punch, I am. All right, one, two, three. Awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Make fun of me.
That's my favorite thing. I had others, but the Christmas tree is just.
So our next is a proclamation of Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Right. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is a time-honored and essential part of local government, serving communities throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is one of the oldest public service positions integral to the foundation and continuity of local governance. And whereas professional municipal clerks provide a vital link between citizens, local governing bodies, and various agencies at all levels of government. And whereas professional municipal clerks are committed to upholding principles of neutrality and partiality in equal service to all members of the community. And where as the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information hub for local government operations and community affairs. And whereas professional municipal clerks continuously strive to enhance the administration of their office by actively participating in educational programs, professional development opportunities, and the annual conferences of their state, provincial, county, and international associations. And where it is fitting to recognize and celebrate the significant contributions and accomplishments of professional municipal clerks. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, mayor of the city of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through May tenth, two thousand twenty-five as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Jill Murray, who signed her own certificate. All professional municipal clerks.
I didn't write that, though.
For their invaluable service and steadfast dedication to the communities they serve.
I've given up.
Yes.
Every day next week. It's Clerks Week. I don't know how many times we should see the gift every day. Ah, communication team recognition.
I'm going to get Allison and Brandy to come up with their numerous awards.
So many, can they even hold them all?
There should be a competition.
I'm also very interested in this negative interaction, I can only imagine. It was either I got chewed out or you like told me I looked like a dwarf or something.
It was either of those things. I'll remind you later.
You don't have to do that. Tonight, Madam Mayor and members of city council, I have the privilege of recognizing the premier communications team that is going to do weird stuff behind me, I think. For their awesome awards they got from the North Carolina City-City Communicators Conference. So Hendersonville was one of twenty-seven jurisdictions recognized out of a hundred and seventy-nine entries by professionals from the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators. So they have a, a separate state association review all these awards. And Allison and Brandy brought home four first-place awards. The first in the special event category, Construendo Puentes, Building Bridges to Community Collaboration. It was a Spanish-first-led listening session by Allison Justice and Brandy Heatherly. They did a great job with our Latinx community and bringing them to the table for the special event. So the special event category, first place. Citizen Participation, the broader Listening to Lead Affordable Housing Listening Sessions. So the broader affordable housing project that started with listening sessions before Helene. And we had sessions scheduled after Helene, and they continue to have those as well to make sure we continue throughout the entire community, getting information to our affordable housing plan. First place there as well. Writing Composition, the Tortured Budget Department, so very timely for tomorrow. Shout out to Adam. But they did a play on Taylor Swift and wrote a great budget engagement message. And they got first place in that as well. And then the Crisis Communications category, no one could beat this team's efforts during Hurricane Helene. I appreciate everything they did. The title was What Happens When Everything Goes Dark, and you couldn't beat having these two on your side. So I want to recognize them and their four first-place awards. And if y'all would go to the front and get your picture taken.
Thank you. These aren't very easy.
Thank you, council. I would just like to say that these awards are a direct reflection to you all's commitment to transparency and community engagement. So we share this with you, thank you for investing in communications for local government.
And finally, talking of Hurricane Helene, debris.
Miss Ma'am, I'm going to ask Alan Cliff to come up and stand beside me. He's our crew leader from our Environmental Services Department. He was one of the main driving factors in, in getting this material picked up. So I wanted to have him here with us tonight. Eder, Eder's the other one, but he couldn't make it tonight, along with the other, the other folks who, who helped us as well. But first thing I want to mention is just sending out one last reminder that today is the deadline to have all your material out for us to pick it up. So if there's anybody who does not have it out, please do so. But so far, just to give you a quick update on Storm Sweep, we picked up another sixty-three loads of vegetation. We picked up eighteen loads of C and D. We picked up three loads of mixed material, three pickup truck loads of household hazardous waste and electronics. The other stuff, the vegetation, C and D, and mixed up were picked up with our larger trucks, the knucklebooms. All that work took five hundred and forty-one personnel hours, two hundred and seventy-five equipment hours, which totaled up to eighty-seven total loads for the Storm Sweep event. So our run in total for the whole hurricane, we've picked up thirty-four thousand and one cubic yards of vegetative debris. And that's fifteen hundred and forty loads by city staff and another eight hundred and eighty-seven loads by our mutual aid assistance folks. And just going forward, Monday, we'll, we'll start, you know, making another rounds. These guys will keep working, but we're also going to be documenting what's in the, in the field, out on the streets, and in the right of way. And, and so we'll, we'll keep that process going, but as we go down the streets, we're going to, we're going to make sure that we cross those off and, and, and mark those as finished until we get everything done. So I'll answer any questions you might have.
Mayor, this members of council want to thank Tom and Alan and the team. They took on a pretty hefty challenge that the manager's office gave them. And it's very much appreciated that, you know, we, we threw the challenge to them, they grabbed it, and definitely came up with innovative, innovative ways to, to get the debris off the street so that particularly as we head into spring and summer and tourist season that, trying to wipe some of that memory, we'll never forget Helene, but that, that visual memory is not there as you drive by. but that visual memory is not there as you drive by and see debris on the streets. I want to thank you on behalf of the community. Appreciate your willingness to do that and jump in and do it. Thank you very much, Tom.
Glad to do it. Appreciate the support, counsel, and all the other staff members, the other departments. We appreciate it, and we're glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a request.
Yes.
Is it possible to move the rezoning for the Cowan property up? There's a witching hour that is happening, I think, with a baby.
A witching hour?
It is that time, if you have had small children, you know that the hours of 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. are bad.
Is there any objection from staff?
No.
To doing that?
Not at all.
Okay. All right.
Allen Bervard Knoll. Item C.
Okay, standard rezoning. Item C, 23 Bervard Knoll.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Yes, this is a standard rezoning, Off Signal Hill Road, 23 Bervard Knoll, just under half an acre, currently zoned R20. Originally proposed C2, in talking with staff, the application was adjusted to CHMU, and I'll touch on that a little bit. The future land use designation is innovation. Taking a look at the site photos, upper left, this is the corner, Bervard Knoll, looking up Signal Hill. Property is on the right. Upper right picture is kind of from the right of way that bisects the property, looking back towards Signal Hill, it's kind of the center of the site. This is a portion of the property that is on the opposite side of Bervard Knoll, so it is split. And this is kind of the view from the rear of the site as well. As we take a look at the six criteria we consider, I mentioned that the designation in the Gen H Comprehensive Plan is innovation. The adjacent properties to the southeast, west, and south are also designated as innovation. To the northeast, the properties transition to multi-generational living. The character area description for innovation is that this area supports light manufacturing, maker spaces, creative offices and warehouses, commercial services cater to both daytime workers and local residents. It's conveniently located near major transportation routes. The design follows compatibility standards, using transitional spaces and landscaping to hide loading docks. The area is diverse parcel in building sizes with a central open space and connected greenway system. Streets are, streets vary between pedestrian friendly and those accommodating trucks. So good bid in there to consider, and that's part of that is why we shifted to the CHMU. Continue with the comprehensive plan consistency. Staff finds that the revised petition is consistent with the Gen H Comprehensive Plan, land use and conservation map. I will skip over some of that related to the C2. I'll touch on it again later. Informing the second criteria we have for compatibility, we'll start by reviewing the current land use and zoning map. The subject property is currently zoned R20, it is vacant. The adjacent parcels to the east and west are zoned RCT and C2. Yes, that map is correct. Remaining zoning north of Signal Hill is R20 and R15. Zoning across Signal Hill to the south is C3 and PCD. There's a lot going on over there. The property's fronting is definitely a transition zone. The properties fronting along Signal Hill are primarily vacant and contain residential uses. Most of the residential uses are single-family homes, not part of the planned development. Do you have Signal Ridge Apartments and the proposed Duncan Terrace Apartments in vicinity of the subject property? Five dispersed properties fronting Signal Hill Road do contain commercial uses, including what's proposed for the subject property. The subject parcel is just 43 acres, which is smaller than the larger properties throughout the immediate area. Most properties are greater than one acre in size, with many over five acres in size. The lack of intense development in this area can be attributed to the lack of city sewer. And sewer is located near the intersection of Thompson Street and Signal Hill and at Berkeley Road and Alfred Estates, to the opposite side. Continuing to consider compatibility, staff reviewed the goals and guiding principles of the Gen H Comprehensive Plan. The initial proposed zoning of C2, as I mentioned, we found was inconsistent, was seven of nine of the goals. CHMU conversely was consistent with eight of nine goals, so a major shift. Similarly, C2 was also found to be inconsistent with all seven of the Gen H guiding principles, while CHMU is consistent with six of seven guiding principles. So kind of in general, you know, there's been some discussion about C2 in this area. Staff is really trying to express that based on the vision that we've established in the comp plan, CHMU is going to be a better fit if we're going to make a shift towards commercial land uses in this area. For the third criteria, staff finds that the change conditions related to the recent rezoning of an adjoining property from RCT to C2, that's one of the change conditions. A, we also received a recent application submitted from an adjoining property owner for a 50-unit, single-family attached residential development, which would also bring sewer closer to the site. Some new commercial uses have been constructed in the area, one across the street from the subject property, the other on the same side but closer down to Thompson Street. NCDOT has been in the process of developing an express design for Thompson Street, Signal Hill, Berkeley Road corridor. You may remember the peanut dumbbell roundabout thing, that's part of that. And so those are all factors. In terms of public interest, CHMU does provide design standards that provide some level of compatibility for new development. For public facilities, the subject property currently only served by city water or would be. No annexation proposed at this time. Signal Hill Road is a NCDOT maintained secondary road. In terms of natural environment, there, there's limited, you know, trees or environmentally sensitive areas, and there's no development proposed at this time. Planning Board had a split decision, five to two, in favor of recommending approval. They did express some concerns related to the linear expansion of commercial uses along Signal Hill, and whether that's in the direction we want to go, the potential for increased vehicular congestion that would come along with that, because we know Signal Hill serves as an alternate route for Four Seasons Boulevard. But that said, Planning Board did recommend the comprehensive plan consistency statement on the screen and the rationale for approval on the screen. And then staff has also drafted rationale for denial, should you choose to go that route. And I am available for questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to make any comments?
Just looking forward to improving the area over there. I like Hendersonville, plan it to be our home, so I just hope everything goes well. And actually, I would actually like to say something to this gentleman. Our road still has a lot of brush on it. Signal Hill and the Knoll route, right there, the property. Yeah.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in courts with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
In that public hearing, nobody signed up to speak in person. Is there anyone online seeking recognition? No? Okay, in that case, we'll close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion, or motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to the city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, pin 9579063217, from R20 low-density residential to CHMU, commercial highway mixed-use zoning district, based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H Comprehensive Plan based on the fact that the proposed zoning of CHMU aligns with the Gen H 2040 Comprehensive Plan, future land use and conservation map, and the character area description for innovation. Furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest. From the information staff announces, public hearings, and because CHMU zoning will offer greater economic use of the subject property, given a wide range of limited uses, CHMU zoning along this quarter would lead to additional opportunities for needed housing in close proximity to commercial uses, and CHMU zoning ensures some level of compatibility through application of design standards.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this standard rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Let's have it, motion carries, and that has my proof.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we're going back to conditional zoning district Meadowcrest.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. The city has received an application for a rezoning to urban residential conditional zoning district. The property is located on Dermid Avenue. The applicant and property owner is the Housing Assistance Corporation. The current zoning is R20 low-density residential, and the property is 10.48 acres. The applicant is proposing multifamily housing, which would be affordable housing, and utilize low-income housing tax credits to build. The project is split into two phases, each consisting of three residential buildings, one community, one community building, and a playground. So here you can see site photos. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see a view of the property looking from Dermid Avenue. In the upper right-hand corner, you can see the southern row of trees on the property. In the lower left-hand corner, you can see the southeastern corner of the property looking towards Dermid Avenue. And in the lower right-hand corner, you can see a view to the north of the property of an adjacent building. Here you can see the aerial image of the property. I included the floodplain map here so that you can see on the southwestern corner of the property, there's a little bit of the 100-year floodplain and a little bit of the 500-year floodplain. And then there are also two blue line streams that bookend either side of the property. The neighborhood compatibility meeting was held on March 5th, 2025. There were three residents in person and one resident online. Items discussed included questions pertaining to the floodplain and the encroachment on the 500-year floodplain, concerns regarding the impact of the development on flooding of the adjacent neighborhoods, questions regarding the uses of adjacent areas, questions regarding blue line streams on the site, and questions about the design of the building, the number of bedrooms, and the site plan. So here you can see the site plan. The site plan depicts 132 residential units on approximately 10.48 acres. Here you can see the property access will be off of Dermid Avenue on the lower part of the site plan, and there is a sidewalk that will run from Dermid Avenue on and throughout the site. So here you can see, this is phase one of the property, so it's split into two phases. You can see that access off of Dermid Avenue. And then here you can see phase two. In the upper left-hand corner, I'll talk about this more in a little bit, but there is an easement that the developer has been, is willing to grant the city to create a future stubout, or I guess a future road connection. It is a stubout easement. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few slides. Here is the landscape plan for the second phase of the project. The landscaping, per city staff review, is compliant at this time. And then here, we have it in phase one of the project. So they have an open space requirement that they have to provide, which is 30% common open space, which is 10%, and then street trees are also required. So they're required on that entry road, and then the road that connects the two phases of the project. There also is tree preservation requirements. So the applicant has provided 20% preservation of existing canopy, and then an additional 5% preservation, and then 7% new tree canopy installation, which meets our requirements. So I'm going to go through some of these developer-proposed conditions. The city has reviewed these and is, staff is fine with these conditions. So the first one is regarding building orientation. So in urban residential, we, the code requires that the buildings be oriented around parks or plazas. They were not able to achieve that with their design, so they have asked for relief with the understanding that they are providing outdoor spaces, community gathering spaces that are adjacent to the buildings. Number two is related to fire sprinklers. They're going to sprinkle the, all of the buildings on the site. Number three is related to the traffic impact analysis, which is also required with urban residential. So the developer is requesting that the TIA be waived rather than deferred, granting relief from that section of our ordinance or our zoning code. The proposed trip generation does not meet the threshold established under Article 6. Furthermore, as a Lytech product, trip generation is expected to be below typical averages. And then the fourth condition is related to that secondary access. So it says, while not required for fire service, the applicant agrees to grant a future easement in the northwest corner of phase two for the extension and connection of adjacent developments in the future for secondary access. The alignment and extents of the easement will be determined in the future and will not impact any access utilities, parking or structures proposed with this project. So just to briefly touch on this a little bit more, this was a staff request in the site plan review stage of this, to have some sort of stubout, and the agreement that we came to, and the developer has given or will provide an easement, which staff is comfortable with. And the real reason for this is because Providence Walk is very close to this property. So in that upper left-hand corner where there's the red box and then the line, there is a stubout there. And so theoretically, the city in the future could have some connectivity between this development and that stubout that's already at Providence Walk. There's also the opportunity, if it doesn't end up becoming a road, to have maybe greenway access or trail access or things like that. So, you know, having the easement, it just opens up opportunities for the city in the future. So here we have some renderings of the design. Here's one of the smaller apartment buildings that they've proposed. And the subject property and the surrounding parcels are designated as multi-generational living on the future land use plan. This character area is characterized by mixed residential development and limited amounts of small-scale neighborhood-serving commercial. It's comprised of a variety of homes, mixing detached and attached units with a lesser amount of multifamily units. The combination of housing types are intended to create intergenerational neighborhoods. Improved open spaces in the form of greens, pocket parks, and neighborhood parks are interspersed. The subject parcel was excluded from the land supply map and suitability assessment analysis in the comprehensive plan, and staff found this to be consistent with the character area description and the zoning crosswalk. The subject property is currently zoned R20. The adjacent property owned by the housing authority is also zoned R20. C3 is the other predominant zoning district that surrounds the subject property. There is also a PRD/CCD development that I mentioned earlier, Providence Walk, that is relatively close to the subject property, can be seen in the upper left-hand corner of this map. The uses surrounding the property are residential and commercial, with several automobile dealerships, a grocery store, and a home improvement store located in the immediate vicinity. With regards to compatibility, as mentioned before, there is a mix of uses in the surrounding area, including both residential and commercial. When considering change conditions, staff noted that there is an ongoing need for affordable housing housing plan that is in the works at the moment. The subject property will be served by city services. The subject property will have to comply with the city's tree preservation ordinance and landscaping requirements. As mentioned earlier, there is a small amount of 100- and 500-year floodplain on the property. The project will not impact the 100-year floodplain and will have minimal impact on the 500-year floodplain. The current site plan is following our stream buffer requirements for the blue line streams located on the property. The planning board made a motion recommending approval at their April 10 meeting, and that motion carried 6 to 0. And this was the comprehensive plan consistency statement, and then the reasonableness statement, and then we also have a draft denial here. And I can answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Max Lebec. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Assistance Corporation. Before we talk about Meadowcrest, the project, I wanted to talk for a minute about Housing Assistance and our presence in the community. If I can make it go. Great. We were formed in 1988 in the basement of Trinity Presbyterian Church as a home repair group, and that's something that we continue to do. Last year, aside from storm damage, we completed 548 repairs. Additionally, we construct single-family homes. We've completed more than 210 single-family homes to date. The first apartments we built were the Sugarloaf Apartments in 1994, and we currently own and maintain more than 370 units of affordable apartments in Henderson County. All of these apartments are affordable and house people with low incomes, seniors, and persons with disabilities. We currently have a waiting list of about a year across all of our apartments, and those apartments, as well as Meadowcrest, will be maintained as affordable in perpetuity. Most recent apartments we've built, you may be familiar with, is Oklawaha Village on North Main Street, and there are 60 units in this development as well, which would be the plan for Phase 1 of what we are proposing at Meadowcrest. The units are very similar to what we are proposing in the Meadowcrest Apartments. They're three-story apartments and are 1, 2, and 3 stories tall, or sorry, they're three stories, and they're 1, 2, and 3 bedrooms across each of the buildings, which makes the first floor, the first floor is also ADA compliant. The units serve residents between 30% to 60% of area median income. The current rents at Oklawaha Village Apartments are calculated according to income, household makeup, other factors, but the 1-bedroom range is between $382 and $747 a month. For a 2-bedroom, $441 to $865. And the 3-bedrooms range from $485 to $974 a month. The rents have not yet been determined for Meadowcrest, but they will all be affordable. As with Oklawaha Village, we will have amenities for the residents, such as a playground, a staffed community center, a computer room, laundry, and mail kiosk. The need for affordable housing, as you all know, is at a critical level, particularly after Hurricane Helene, and our waitlist at Oklawaha Village went up to 2 years almost immediately after the storm. And so now Danny Watson from our engineering firm ESP will review the proposed site plan and will be available to answer any questions you may have about the organization or the proposed plan. Thank you.
It's just the center button. We'll advance it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Danny Watson, Engineering Manager with ESP Associates, and we're supporting Housing Assistance as the Planning and Engineering Consultant. And so we'll generally go over the site plan. We have retaining walls, we have the parking lots, and we have the buildings as is shown here, and I won't repeat what Sam and Meg has mentioned, but generally the site, the trees, tree preservation, everything is shown here. And as you can see, the site, the drive comes from Dermid Avenue and comes into the site, and that's Phase 1. Phase 2 is in the back, and you can see the easement that Sam mentioned here as well. Is that it? Okay. Any questions? Just somewhat repeat what Sam mentioned.
So there's 2 playgrounds and 2 community buildings?
Yes. So the second one is sort of in the trees in the middle of the second phase.
And you can see the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain. You can see that we're out of the 100-year FEMA-regulated floodplain, and the retaining wall is there that's re-elevated above the 100-year floodplain as well. Any questions?
No questions. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Miss Mayor, it has.
We will open this public hearing. Let me get back to the right one, and we had one person sign up, and that is Ken Fitch.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. And first, Alan Clift. The man is amazing. The way he handles that machinery is like a brain surgeon at work. Truly an amazing, amazing man, and what a treasure that we have, such a man working for our city. The project before us is an important project. Its significance is underscored by the fact that at this same meeting, we are seeing the official withdrawal of a similar tax credit project. This project arrives under the auspices of a highly respected local entity, providing housing assets and support for city residents. And tonight, we consider a much-needed project where city residents, as well as city firefighters, police, and public work staff could afford to live, and live here and work here. The project is site-specificly designed to function within the realities and constraints of this particular tract, with its challenging grading and steep terrain issues, as well as its proximity to 100- and 500-year floodplains, and the natural conservation area to the west, and with sensitivity to the forest, and the blue line streams that are present on the property and that are tributaries to the Mud Creek watershed. And the design reflects serious consideration of these issues. The planning board discussion of the project revealed the intricate interconnection of the utilities and structural elements, including the private road network and the centrality of the parking, in relation to the other elements and the issue of travel through the phased project that does present some vulnerability to disruption and intrusion, and a concern for safety that are factors for consideration. Key to the sustainability of the project are the retaining walls, located as they are adjacent to and within the floodplain areas, and there is an acknowledged need for further review of these essential elements, especially given our recent shared experience. There is also, of course, concern about the alteration of the natural character of the site. Some of us recognize the site as an upland component of the former wildlife corridor that serves as habitat for a wide variety of wildlife species and pollinators that has been largely destroyed by development. However, in this project, we must note that the legendary Susan Freydy has stated that there is a major effort in this project to save as many existing trees as possible, and that is reflected in the plan where we do see green. But this is conditional zoning, and there is one doubly troubling condition here, with impacts to the project and its functioning, and also the natural environment. And that is a request to provide a road stub at the northwest corner of the property for connection to other developments. The original request was for a stub at the property line, but the project team, recognizing the major issues there, wisely moved to negotiate another possibility. Yes, it would be a formidable task indeed for anyone to undertake the design and construction of a road connection for the private road network of the project through the property line, that on this route would puncture the stream buffer, remove canopy trees, negotiate a change in elevation 20 feet or more at one point, and insert a bridge across a blue line stream. And where is that road going? On the map, it's going directly toward the floodplain and the natural conservation area, one of the few areas so designated. Or will that natural area eventually be built up for development? That is the question. When you build that road heading that way, is that a possibility? Perhaps, as mentioned, the road will head towards Providence Walk, but that is going through a flood area and also unstable terrain that they are still trying to deal with. And then that would bring traffic to that area and raise a hornet's nest of opposition. But the question is, who would build this road? Now Lou indicated the city would be involved, but poor Brent, he might have to, he may want to retire before this one arrives, because, anyway. And how much would it cost for the city? Now, that kind of money would fix a bunch of sidewalks or raise some salaries. And who would maintain these public and/or private roads? And who, and would Justin be able to get a fire truck through this terrain? Yes, it is only a condition, but as we know, a condition can quickly become an action imperative. And as we've seen, a developer and his attorney can show up and make the claim for a development. But enough of that. This dutifully and carefully planned project needs to retain its own integrity to serve the urgent need without encumbrance, and not serve as a stepping stone for goodness knows what. The project is carefully designed to function within the constraints of its location, with its specific design and private road network, and not as a thoroughfare. It needs to thrive and provide a safe home place for its residents without hovering intrusion. We must thank Housing Assistance for its dedicated work here and look to approval, and perhaps the home for some of our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone online seeking to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and we will close this public hearing. Now let's hold discussions. Motion.
map of the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property in 9569947077 from R-20 Low Density Residential to URCZD, Urban Residential Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated 4/21/25 and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein, and the following permitted uses: residential multifamily 120, 132, 1 to 3 bedroom units. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include...
We're going to do that.
No, not going to do that. Okay, great. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville Gen. H 2045 Comprehensive Plan based on the information from the staff analysis, and because the petition is consistent with the range of goals, getting principles, and the future land use designation of multi-generational living as defined in Chapter 4 of the Gen. H Comprehensive Plan. We find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis public hearing, and because the petition incorporates a mix of housing types into an existing urban neighborhood, the petition places residents within an area of cities, of existing city services and infrastructure, the petition places residents within an area of existing job opportunities, and the petition will provide more housing to support existing and future residents of Hendersonville.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this conditional zoning district Meadowcrest, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries, and that rezoning has been approved. Okay, thank you. All right. That was a long one. Okay, rezoning, standard rezoning, 2620 Chimney Rock Road.
Yes, so the city has received a standard rezoning request for the parcel containing 2620 Chimney Rock Road, which is shown as the orange parcel on the screen. The parcel is included in a larger planned development known as White Pine Villas. City staff is suggesting that if the city decides to rezone this parcel, that they also consider rezoning the other 2 parcels associated with the planned development, and I will explain the rationale for that later in the presentation. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to highway mixed use. The total of the 3 parcels make up 4.64 acres. If rezoned, all uses in highway mixed use would be allowed. Currently, only multifamily residential is permitted, is a permitted use for the site. The Gen. H Comprehensive Plan designates the subject parcel mixed-use commercial and multi-generational living. In the top-left corner is a view of the subject property taken from Sitgo looking south. Top-right is the view of existing homes at 2620 Chimney Rock Road. In the bottom-left-hand corner is a typical view of the inside of a wooded area on the subject property, and in the bottom-right-hand corner is the view of the stream running along the property frontage. So prior to 2020 and 2022 conditional rezonings, the subject property was zoned HMU, which is the district established for this corridor. The White Pine Villa development was a low-income housing tax credit project for seniors. It had 2 CZD variations. The main difference between the 2 versions was that the building added a floor while keeping the same number of dwelling units, which was 78. This property, or this project is currently entitled by City Council, but it is not slated for construction. On the screen is the preliminary site plan associated with the White Pine Villas development. In purple is the parcel that is proposed to be rezoned by the applicant. As you can see, rezoning this one parcel would be problematic because it removes half of the building proposed with the White Pine Villas, making the remainder of the development unconstructible. For this reason, city staff is requesting you also rezone the remaining parcels associated with this development if you decide to rezone the 2620 parcel. It is worth mentioning that the project did not receive low-income housing tax credits, and the developer of the project obtained credits for a different project elsewhere in the city. He no longer has an option on the property, and the likelihood of White Pine Villa being developed is... developed is currently very low. The subject property has a split designation of mixed use commercial and multi-generational living, acting as a transitional area between the two designations. The parcel to the south, which fronts U S sixty-four, are designated as mixed use commercial, while the parcels to the north are designated as multi-generational living. Many of the parcels to the north are vacant or underutilized, offering potential for future development. Additionally, the entire subject property, including all three parcels, lies within the focused intensity node associated with the U S sixty-four and Howard Gap Road intersections. To the east, a parcel containing a blue line stream is designated as open space conservation. All three properties are listed as underdeveloped on the land suitability map and land supply map. All three properties are also within the focused intensity node for U S sixty-four and Howard Gap, and all three properties are consistent with their character area description. The U S sixty-four corridor is zoned highway mixed use, a designation created for this corridor. Before the establishment of the White Pine Villas zoning district, the subject property also held a highway mixed use designation. To the east, there is a large-scale apartment complex under a planned residential development conditional zoning district, and to the south, the Ingalls Development is zoned as a planned commercial development conditional zoning district. However, the predominant zoning along the corridor remains highway mixed use. Prior to twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two rezoning to P R D C Z D, these parcels were zoned highway mixed use. Highway mixed use was created for this corridor, and all adjacent properties are currently zoned highway mixed use. As for changed conditions, the White Pines Villas project was a low-income housing tax credit project that did not receive the necessary tax credits to proceed. In discussions with Stephen Drake, the developer of White Pines Villa, he confirmed that he no longer has an option on the property and does not foresee moving forward with the project. As for public interest, the city has focused on developing mixed use districts particularly along corridors. The rezoning supports the initiative by designating these parcels to mixed use zoning districts established for this corridor. These parcels are located within the corporate city limits and will have access to services associated with that. Even if rezoned, and any new development on the site will require to follow all zoning and subdivision ordinance requirements concerning natural resources and the environment. After April tenth meeting, Planning Board recommended the rezoning for approval. The motion carried seven to zero. And here you can see the Planning Board recommended comprehensive plan consistency statement, as well as their reasonableness statement, and their, uh, this is a draft denial. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I wanted to make, and I should have asked before now, but back in sure, so we, the property owners, do we have signed, are all property owners agreeing or anything signed so they agree to the rezoning for all three parcels?
Just for the one, the other two are city initiated.
Okay.
We're increasing the.
I want to make sure, so it's not a down zone. It's not a down zone.
They're all so vacant, so they're not creating any non-conformity.
Okay.
Yeah.
I should have asked that question before now, but it came to me while we're.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Uh, would the applicant like to make any comments? Here. Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We'll open that public hearing. No one has signed up here to speak. Is anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead and close that public hearing. Counsel? Your turn.
My turn, I guess. Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing zoning designation of the subject property pin nine six seven zero dash seven zero dash six four nine eight from P R D C Z D planned residential development conditional zoning district to highway mixed use H M U as requested in the zoning map amendment application. I further move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of pins nine six seven zero seven zero eight six zero seven and nine six seven zero seven zero eight eight six four from P R D C Z D planned residential development conditional zoning district to H M U highway mixed use so that no unconstructable residual parcels of the White Pine Villas development remain based on the following. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H twenty forty-five comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the petition is consistent with a range of goals, guiding principles, and the future land use designation of chapter four of the Gen H comprehensive plan. Furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis public hearing, and because the proposed map amendment seeks to return the parcels to their previous base zoning, and the proposed map amendment restores potential development opportunities on this property by permitting the same uses available to the other adjacent, adjacent highway mixed use properties.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the standard rezoning for Chimney Rock Road, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As habit, motion carries, and it's back where it used to be. All right, then we are on number D, number D, zoning text amendment reforms for housing.
Yes, good evening again. Is everybody good? This one's, this one's got a little bit to it, and so I just wanted to ask. I know that's not necessarily my role, but I just felt like.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Yeah. Let's take.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just snuck out of here, so.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just gonna take longer.
No, you're not.
No, you're not.
Okay, we can jump in here. So to get back to the reduced poll flag lot, small lot text amendment that was adopted recently, staff has been working on a number of reforms that are directed to our, towards our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance that are related to housing. And this particular one that we're going to go over this evening impacts a number of sections of the zoning ordinance. The focus of the text amendment is to create flexibility within the zoning ordinance to allow for an increase in the supply of attainable for sale housing or naturally occurring affordable housing. These changes will also make it easier for the city and its housing partners to develop dedicated affordable housing. So the difference being one is subsidized and permanently, the other one kind of happens as a product of the market. And it's also important to note that they're, that we're targeting the type of housing product that provides both starter homes and that are for folks who are just entering the market and empty nester homes for those who are downsizing and maybe at the tail end of the market. And these types of injections of targeted supply can make our housing market much more So we've broken the reforms into two categories. And this, there will be more coming. And so the first, we're calling low hanging fruit. And the second, for lack of a better phrase, we're calling high hanging fruit. If you've got any other ideas, let me know. And those are considered to be more impactful in terms of deviating more from the current standards we have. Under the low hanging fruit, I've included the recently adopted small lot ordinance because it's already been adopted, but in reality, it probably could be categorized under the high hanging fruit. The other changes under low hanging fruit include addressing dimensional standards for lot sizes, lot widths and setbacks, adjustments to permitted uses and new and modified definitions in the zoning ordinance. All of this will be covered this evening. In addition, we're covering two of the high hanging fruit proposals, which change, changes proposed address the permitted maximum size for accessory dwelling units and changes to how we calculate density that will encourage the construction of smaller units. We have other text amendments that are in the works, including an overhaul of the planned residential development, PRD zoning district. That one is pretty well developed. It's already been to planning board. We're still working on some final tweaks and hope to bring that back to you next month. We're also taking a look at opportunities for multifamily along our primary transportation corridors, including the Acusta Trail. I've included a photo here of an espalier. I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with that term. But an espalier is a fruit tree, a group of fruit trees that are planting, planted and managed and designed to train the tree to produce an abundance of fruit, but in a way where it can be easily harvested. And when I started thinking about the low hanging fruit and the high hanging fruit and this idea of an espalier and the fact that, you know, we're managing and tweaking the zoning code so that there will be an abundance of housing that's attainable for everyone. And there won't be any high hanging fruit. So I like that idea and wanted to share. So getting into the zoning code. So taking a look at this low hanging fruit, we'll start by, we started by proposing to reduce the front side and rear setbacks for all the residential zoning districts. So currently that roughly on each zoning district, that takes up about 50% of the area of a lot is dedicated to setbacks. So we targeted that that would be closer to 25 to 35% of the lot, just to provide more flexibility. For lot widths, we also adjusted it. We looked at what a traditional lot is, a 50 by 150 lot. That's, you know, one to three ratio of width to depth. So we went back and looked at all of the residential lot widths that are required and that made significant changes to bring those down to a one to three ratio. We also provide a language related to where a front facing garage can be sited on the, on the lot. And so we're, the language states that it has to be 25 feet setback. The portion of the structure that features the front facing garage has to be set back 25 feet. The illustration that is shown on the screen will accompany the definitions and these provisions in the zoning code. So there's some illustration to that. And we also eliminating, are proposing to eliminate additional minimum lot size for duplexes. Each zoning district has a extra chunk of land you have to have to be able to do a duplex. We're just proposing that single family and two family are permitted uses, equal amount of minimum lot size. We're not changing the minimum lot size for each zoning district, but we are changing that, proposing to change that. We also have added definitions, including add definitions for three family and four family residential, and I'll get into some more of the details on that. Quickly, I'm just going to go through some of this quickly with, you know, R40, we reduced the minimum lot width and we reduced the setbacks and we added that the, you know, that front facing garage has to be set back further. In R20, this is where two family first gets introduced, that second line, you see the removal of the additional requirement for, for additional land. And this is carried through the remainder of the zoning districts that we're revising, R20, R15, R10 and R6. And again, the one to three ratio for lot width and the, you know, reduction from, you know, in R20, the land set aside for setbacks is 49%. Currently, we're aiming to reduce that to 35%. In R15, from 43% to 33% and so on. As we get into our commercial districts, similarly, you know, looking at the setbacks, reducing the extra requirements for residential duplexes, same in C2 and C3. In C4, we have a little bit more going on. We are clarifying accessory dwelling units, adding two family, adding three family and four family and small scale multifamily, which you may recall, we wrote and introduced into MIC year and a half ago, two years ago. And so we're expanding where that use is allowed within the city. Seafield or covers a very small amount of land in the city, but it is in some kind of key spots, key nodes, but just a couple of spots. Also had a giant acre, you know, an acre of minimum lot size. So I'm not sure how that's neighborhood commercial, but so we've reduced it. And the setback, 40 feet from the road for a neighborhood commercial business, that didn't seem to make sense either. So we've reduced that to 10. And now it's more of a mixed use zoning district. For MIC, all we have done is take the changes that we proposed for R6 and apply them to MIC as well, because those two districts are generally in the same geographic area right outside of downtown. For I1, we are essentially clarifying that residential uses are not appropriate in industrial areas, except for if it is in an adaptive reuse, such as the one shown here from Greenville, where an old mill was converted into multifamily. For, now we're shifting from Article 5 into Article 6, and we're going to look at Article 12 and 16. Under general provisions, we're proposing that corner lots, the setback on corner lots is, would, would scale up and scale down depending on the zoning district rather than be a fixed number. Definitions, we have, the first one is, is clarifying really the ADU, nothing significant there. The definitions for four family is brand new. Definition for three family is brand new. Two family was already in there, but this, you know, this image is of a quadplex. The North Carolina State Building Code now allows up to four units in a structure to be built under the single family residential building code. So we're making some changes to prepare or kind of get ready for that kind of, that reality and, and potential changes that could come where quadplexes are permitted in all zoning districts. We've been hearing, there's been bills that have stated that for a number of years now. Yes. So continuing with definitions, the, we're amending the front yard definition to allow for an exception for the first five feet of porches, steps, eaves, et cetera, to encroach into the front setback. This exception is already granted to the side and rear. I've included those definitions, even though there's no change for the first three feet, and I'll provide some more on this shortly. We're also defining double frontage lots, that's currently undefined, which can be problematic if you're trying to figure out how to apply setbacks. And then in small scale multifamily, we're also making just some clarifications there. So the definitions that provide for exceptions into setbacks, that really should belong under exceptions and modifications. So in addition to adding, you know, to keeping it in the definition or, or making that part of the definition, we're also proposing to allow for that encroachment to be codified under Article 8. And that is, that is illustrated up here with the front porch. So you'll remember that the garage, the front facing garage has to be set back 25 feet. And now we're also saying that the front porch can, can encroach forward up to five feet into the typical setback and that the, the, the wall of the principal structure is where that, is where that setback has to occur. And so in doing that, in combination, we are creating a more community oriented site design. And I can speak more to that if there's interest, but I'll move forward. Eaves is the other thing here. I've been seeing less and less eaves used in construction and I, I don't know what everyone thinks about eaves, but it may be just seen as like an aesthetic kind of treatment. But eaves are important and I'm going to briefly talk about it. They are more than just aesthetic. They protect from water infiltration along the foundation. They provide additional shade, which reduces energy costs. They protect homes from weathering, from the sun and from rainwater that can deteriorate both internal and external components of the structure. And so we want to make sure we're not penalizing eaves. If you had to start your setback at the eve, you know, you're like, oh, we don't need eaves, you know? I need the house to be what it is, you know? So that's, we don't want to do that because eaves are important. And I just stuck this in here because I wanted, I categorized this as a yoga joke. So I'll just leave that there. All right.
You're really in rare form tonight.
So now we're moving into the high hanging fruit portion. One significant proposal involves adding a general provision that would apply across the zoning district and that would allow for units that are 1,200 square feet or less to be counted as half a unit when you're calculating your density. So this encourages, or more accurately removes current disincentives for constructing smaller, more affordable units. And that, and we're acknowledging, acknowledging that there's natural incentives in the market for, and differences between the construction of smaller units and larger units and which ones you'd be more inclined to build. And so we're trying to tailor our zoning code accordingly in an effort to allow the construction of smaller units to keep pace with the larger units. And making these changes, it would allow the return on investment for a smaller unit development to become as attractive, if not more attractive to developers who would otherwise be inclined to produce a large scale unit. We also are aiming to align the size, that 1,200 number that we, you may recall from the small lot text amendment, we're trying to align that, these recurring standards. And the next one we're going to talk about also aligns, that is for ADUs. We are proposing to increase the maximum square footage for ADUs to 1,200 square feet. This would only apply to those properties that have a principal structure that is at least 1,200 square feet. If it's, if the principal structure is less than 1,200 square feet, then the ADU size would be allowed to be the maximum of 100% of the size of the principal structure. So you, so that you don't ever end up with a accessory structure that is exceeding the size of the principal structure. This one actually evolved over time. It had, it had different parts to it and took a different form, but it, it evolved through the legislative and planning board process. And so I just wanted to highlight that. This is a good example of that collaborative process and how things can get tailored before they come to you this evening.
Now, can I ask about the language in A that just says clearly incidental? Does that, is that referring mostly to size or like it feels a little like there is room for gray area in the interpretation of that?
So there's also standards for accessory dwelling use under each zoning district that dictate the, where the placement.
Okay.
And so part of that incidental accessory to is also the placement. So they can only be located to the side or rear of a principal structure.
And size.
Size is, size is, yes. So there, so for instance, one of the ways this took shape initially was that it could be no more than 50% of the principal structure in size.
Okay.
But then trying to get that to match up with all the different sizes of these structures and try to get it to scale up and scale down and be like, what about these sized homes? And what about those? And we were like, you know what? We have a standard 800 flat right now. Let's stick with a flat number. Let's just bump it up and align it with the other standards that we're, we're proposing. But let's make sure that we don't end up with one that's going to be larger than the other.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
So 1,200, this magic number that we've been working with, what, why, why are we using that number? So there are a number of different designs that you could end up with that could be created from that number, but the primary aim is that we will be able to accommodate a two bedroom, two bath dwelling unit. That's kind of what's shown here. This type of housing configuration is the most versatile for serving individuals and small families. You need to kind of think back to the starter home and empty nester home idea. So, you know, why do we need these smaller homes? Well, if you take a look at our market, you can see that in the median household size is less than two people. So that's across the city. If you look at the DFI study, which called out our LMI households in particular, low and moderate income families, households made up by individuals made up two thirds of the renter households and three quarters of the homeowner households. So the numbers tell the story. We, we need more smaller units. Okay, taking a quick look at the land area, so we, we're really targeting specific zoning districts. Those zoning districts in combination cover almost 58% of the land area in the city. So this is, this will have a significant impact. We're shifting towards comprehensive plan consistency, I promise. And this slide also reflects a similar analysis, looking at the Gen H character area districts, and they make up 55% of the land area in the study area. And those descriptions of the residential character areas help to illustrate that this proposal aligns with the vision in Gen H in terms of providing an efficient use of land. And then continuing with the consistency, staff does find that this is consistent with the Gen H comprehensive plan character area descriptions and the zoning crosswalk. The planning board unanimously supported staff's recommendation on this. The criteria for compatibility, staff reviewed the provisions in Gen H for the guiding principles and the goals and found that the proposed amendment is compatible, given the provisions for providing a mix of housing types and development standards that promote pedestrian friendly design and compatible site and building design. The excerpts from the, illustrate the consistency with the guiding principles, compact development, missing middle housing, desirable affordable housing. All of this is packaged in to what we're proposing this evening. The third criteria is that the text amendment is related to change conditions, and this is in response to the, the growing need for attainable housing in the city, which has been well documented. The fourth criteria considered for public interest, again, increased housing stock and expanded utilization of existing land provides benefits to those in need of housing and property owners who can see a greater return on investment with greater utilization of their property. This next one, public facilities could also fall under that last category for public interest because this proposal, as it's written, will allow for the greater utilization of existing infrastructure. And that, that really cannot be understated as a, as an important goal. As terms of the effect on natural environment, staff is aware that there is the potential for the lost mature trees. A lot of mature trees exist, you know, are present in our existing established neighborhoods where we could see infill development. But we also believe that with the relaxed setbacks, there's more opportunities for flexibility in siding structures. So hopefully we can avoid as much as possible, some of those, that mature canopy. In closing, the planning board unanimously supported the proposed amendments. They put forth the proposed comprehensive plan consistency statement on the screen as well as the rationale for approval. And staff has developed rationale for denial as well. And I'll happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I assume that you, I mean, this was like expansive research, I think, and I appreciate your passionate, like, the way that you're speaking about it because it shows us that you are taking the care and concern to do something positive for the community. And I know I really appreciate your advice and guidance on these types of things. When you're designing, like, or changing the code for certain setbacks, right? Will, I assume that since there hasn't been any, like, proposed project at this point, that there will be like small things that have to be modified after this, right? Because if, if we're kind of changing how we're doing things, there may be additional things that would have to change as well. Do you foresee that happening or how would we deal with that when it does happen?
You mean kind of unintended consequences that may impact other?
Yes.
Departments or?
Yes.
Things of that nature? In terms of setbacks, I don't necessarily foresee any, we don't have, if we, so one thing that, that can be impacted is making sure there's enough room for drainage or utilities or access for maintenance and things of that nature. And I don't think we're going to such an extreme that that would be impacted. Additionally, the building code is going to require, you know, fire separation. At the minimum, I think we have five feet on an R6, which is the tightest, five feet on one side and five feet on the neighboring side is going to be a total of 10. So that gets you your fire separation and hopefully would, so from a setback standpoint, there's that. The front setback is the one that is less about privacy and neighbor compatibility. That's what the sides and rear are supposed to be for or aimed for. And I think the question we asked ourselves is how much of that, how much should a property owner give up towards their neighbors? And what is, what is the correct answer for that? And so we, so we're putting forth what, what we think is an appropriate thing, given the circumstances that we're facing as a community. The front setback's a little bit different because you have, you have to consider potential future transportation needs and, you know, widening being the right of way acquisition can get really expensive. If you've got a structure in there, it's getting a lot more expensive as DOT. So again, I, I don't see our local streets where, where, where we have residential zoning, at least this is also philosophical about, you know, from my perspective, from a transportation standpoint, I don't think we need to be widening those streets. I think we need to be putting sidewalks in and potentially bike lanes, but not also lane widths. And so we should be able to utilize either the existing right of way or existing right of way plus some of this front setback if we do have to acquire some. But I don't think we're reducing it to the point where we're going to end up with structures that we're having to acquire.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
But we also reserve the right to come back and tweak it.
You know, there it is.
It's living, breathing document, isn't it? It's got a, but until you try, you don't know, right? I mean, it's, sorry.
I just think this is such a great step.
Thank you.
So happy. Thank you.
We've been talking about it for years, a lot of this stuff.
All right. No other questions?
Thank you.
All right, Madam Corrigan, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
Okay, we have one person signed up to speak, Ken Fitch.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. I've spoken to this issue before. We live in a mountain town and some would like it to become an urban metropolis, but the geography is still that of a mountain town with mountains, foothills, slopes of all degree, forests, a few fields, gardens, public and private, wetlands and floodplains and yards of many shapes and sizes and a network of streams and creeks, some intermittent that appear and disappear throughout the year. The reality here is that every neighborhood thus has diversity and each parcel has its own individual character. So a text amendment, well intentioned for growth or infill possibility, may have impacts not intentioned. The situation has become complicated in neighborhoods that have their own unique character, where the adjustments for infill development may be wonderful, but also alter the neighborhood and degrade the quality of life for adjacent or nearby neighbors. A particular impact can be the loss of trees or vegetation that contribute to the distinctive character of a parcel or a neighborhood and the loss, interruption without recourse or remedy for those adversely impacted and then contribute to a fracturing of a sense of community at a time when it is most needed. So for a text amendment, one size may not fit all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone online seeking to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll close that public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I'm with the City Council, adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning, City of Hendersonville zoning ordinance article for establishing of zoning districts, Article 5. Zoning district classification, Article 6. General provisions, Article 8. Exceptions and modifications, Article 12. Definitions and terms and Article 16. Supplementary standards as presented by staff based on the following. One, the petition is to be found consistent with the Hendersonville, City of Hendersonville Gen H comprehensive plan based on the following information. The proposed text amendment aligns with the Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation map and the character area descriptions. We also find that this petition to be reasonable in the public interest based on the following information from staff analysis and the public hearing. And because the proposed amendment creates an opportunity to address the need for additional dispersed attainable infill housing. dispersed attainable infill housing, the proposed amendment allows for property owners to better utilize their property and earn additional revenue. And the proposed amendment will incentivize the construction of smaller, more affordable dwellings and starter homes.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the zoning text amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. All right. Very good. Thank you for all that work.
Well done.
Thanks, ma'am. Okay, new business. We have a couple of items. First is an annexation analysis and advertisement, Upward Road.
Yes, so the city has received an annexation petition for a property located on Upward Road. I will be presenting staff's annexation analysis and advisement. Staff will provide you with an analysis of the property as it stands today. I will present, present to you all on what is possible on the property today with county zoning and city zoning. And I will also compare the future land use of the property using both the county and city comprehensive plans. Property is located along Upward Road on the eastern side of I-26. Property is 2.65 acres. The proposed use of the property is a gas station. The map on the right shows the property highlighted in yellow. You can see that it's approximately 8,577 feet as the crow flies from the contiguous city limits, but there are several satellite and, satellite annexations around the subject property. Looking at the comprehensive plans for both the county and the City of Hendersonville, the county designates the area as a community center while the city designates it as a mixed-use commercial area. The county encourages non-residential commercial services as well as mixed-use development, and the city encourages a mix of retail, restaurants, services, office, and civic uses as well as residential housing. The county specifies that this area should include medium-to-large-scale businesses or single-family homes, townhomes, or apartments, and the city indicates that this area should be the most intense district outside of the downtown character area. The county locates community centers around intersections of state roads or near areas of residential development that can be served by commercial uses, and the city indicates that the mixed-use commercial should be at intersections of major thoroughfares and along major corridors that could benefit from a mix of commercial and residential uses. So here are two images from the respective comprehensive plans to give you a visual of what is desired, and they're fairly comparable, even though the cities has, appears apartments above the commercial. So Henderson County allows convenience stores, fuel pumps, retail sales, and residential within their zoning code. I should mention there, this area is considered regional commercial in the county. The residential density is capped at 16 units per acre, and there is a conditional rezoning required when 10 or more multifamily dwelling units are proposed. The applicant has not proposed a zoning district, however, the city is advising the rezoning of the property if it were to be annexed to commercial highway mixed use. In CHMU, there are a large number of uses allowed. Some of the specific uses allowed are convenience stores with or without gasoline, a variety of commercial businesses, residential, single, two, and multifamily. The number of residential units is capped at 12 units per acre with 60% open space provided. Adjacent properties already annexed into the city are Zone C3 and CHMU, and adjacent uses include gas stations, convenience stores, fast food restaurants, an ABC store, and several hotels.
I am.
Yes.
Are there different, this may be a very silly question, are there different zoning designations between municipalities and counties? Like, are they, because the names and the words are always very different, but they a lot of times are similar, so is that typical?
Yes, so, and in this analysis, you know, we think that these two zoning districts are fairly comparable. And so that fully answered your question.
I think, I think Angie would agree, and most, the nomenclature is not, is, is many cases is different, even though they may be compatible uses, they just may be called different.
Every local government has the authority to write their own, is the bottom line. So there's no, like,
Standard.
overarching standard. But just through planning associations and practice, that's where everybody has an R40 or everybody has, you know, it's kind of how it started, but yeah, it's up to them.
Thank you. And I will mention one important distinction between these two is that our CHMU has design standards, whereas the regional commercial in the county does not, so. So the project is in alignment with both the Henderson County and City comprehensive plans. The proposed use for the property is in alignment with the proposed zoning district of CHMU, and if annexed, could be done by right. It also would be able to be done by right in the county. And so there are several options for proceeding with the annexation. So the first option is to proceed as presented, allowing the annexation or, you know, proceeding with the annexation and providing sewer. If you choose not to proceed with the annexation, there are two options as well. So option A would be to proceed as presented, allowing it to be done in the county but providing sewer. And then the third option is to not allow the annexation and to not provide sewer. And so we have provided a motion directing staff to move forward with the annexation review process, and then we have the motion if you choose not to do that. And I didn't add a question slide, but I can take questions.
Can you speak on the desire of the property owner?
The, so the property owner is working with the gas station, it's Sheets who is, I think they're working in tandem to petition for this annexation, so.
And they have interest in that, in the annexation.
Yes, yes. So we have signatures from, you know, both the property owner and the applicant, the gas station, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. That's all. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council direct staff to move forward in reviewing the annexation petition submitted by Quattlebaum Properties FLLC, Robert Quattlebaum and Sheets Inc., West Hall.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of directing staff to move forward, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. Continue. Thank you. Next item, rescheduling of the July.
Mayor vote, members of City Council, your July City Council meeting falls on Thursday, July the 3rd. Due to the fact that the 4th is a holiday, city staff is asking that we have your permission to reschedule that meeting to Wednesday, July the 2nd. So we're moving it one night backwards, and so that that will allow everybody to begin their holiday on the 3rd and be forward with the weekend.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we move the July 3, 2025 City Council meeting to July 2, 2025.
Okay, is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of moving the July meeting to July 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it. All right. Got that. And then boards and committees, we have one appointment to the Tourism Development Authority.
Mayor vote, members of City Council, Brittany Brady is rolling off, who's the city representative rolling off the TDA, and Mike Burnett, who has previously served and is, is the owner of the Waverly, wishes to go back on that board and be our lodging representative, one of our lodging representatives on the TDA.
Someone like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, uh, Madam Mayor, I move the City Council appoint Michael Burnett to the city vacancy spot on the Tourism Development Authority.
Michael Burnett has been nominated for the Tourism Development Authority after further nominations. Not? Those in favor of Michael Burnett to the city vacancy spot on the Tourism Development Authority, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it, motion carries, and he is appointed. Okay, thank you. City manager report.
Mayor vote, members of City Council, just remind, or let you know that your contingency and adjustment report is included in your agenda packet. We'll be glad to answer any questions tonight or later for that. Look forward to seeing everybody at our budget workshop in the morning. Breakfast will be here at 8 o'clock, and we'll start promptly at 8:30, so look forward to that, and then we will look forward to an interesting day related to budget.
Right. Thank you. Anyone here from council?
It's quite a hefty.
Anything you want to bring up?
Interesting, not a good day, an interesting day.
Nothing from council? All right, and we have request for a closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council inter-close session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, A1, 4, and 5. To prevent the disclosure of information, those privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. Serve by the public body to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries and businesses in the area, to consult with an attorney employed and retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option exchange, or lease.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of a closed session for the reasons just listed, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. As have it, motion carries. We're in closed session.